Can anybody hear me?
2025. The two venues that we're looking at, and we're in touch with is Cabarrus Arena, Kannapolis City Hall Laureate Room. I've met with the mayor of Kannapolis. They're giving me a price. Tim and Brian Tyson have met with Kenny, and they've given him a price at the arena. The committee will vote. We'll decide we're going to make this a special event. As you can see, the past two months, we've been pretty diligent about revitalizing. Just within two months, we've done a lot of work, and I'm excited. Like I said, the Sports Hall of Fame was created to recognize individuals, teams, and contributors for their excellence in athletics in Cabarrus County, and we want to continue to do that. Our mission is to publicly honor those people. Here's where I want to talk to y'all. I'm going to give you a nice one. I saw Mr. Pittman out there, and I talked to him a minute. I said, "I'm not here to ask for money." So, everybody relax. Just relax. I'm not here to ask for money. But I do want you to think about something serious. Over here at the old courthouse, we had a room where we put our memorabilia up, but because of expansions and different things and renovations, that no longer is available for us. We're looking for a permanent home. We're looking for somewhere, like when Kenny Wortman played at Northwest Cabarrus. If he's in the Hall of Fame, he can bring his family in, and they can look and say, "Daddy, is that you?" Yeah, that's me when we beat Coach Smith over there at Concord. There's all kinds of things that we can do here in the county, but we're looking for a permanent home. That's where I hope y'all, if you come up with a facility where you might move the American Historic Museum there, or you might move this group there, that group that has memorabilia, maybe we could find a room there. We're looking for a permanent home, and I would hope you would find somewhere maybe we could be. We're going to have a historical subcommittee. We're going to review from 1920 to 1970 prior to integration. We need to go back and look at those years because there's a lot of things there. A lot of times, women especially, get overlooked in that era because they know from the 60s, 70s, and on, women played a prominent role in athletics. We've got several women that played at Odell that are in our Hall of Fame, scored 80 points in a basketball game. A lot of people didn't know that until they got inducted to the Hall of Fame. So, we've got an era committee, historical. We've got another committee that's going to look at contributors from Hartsel, Harrisburg, Wyancoph, Odell, the feeder schools for Central Cabarrus and Northwest Cabarrus. We don't want to forget about them, but we cannot know every person that deserves to be in the Hall of Fame without a nomination from those communities. That's why I asked Tim if he could get us in here today. We're also going to have an era subcommittee that's looking at the Logan community for Concord and the Carver community for Kannapolis. We already have members of their historic society looking into that, so we've got that. We need to hear from the community so that we don't miss someone. You cannot be in the Hall of Fame unless you're nominated. So, the nomination forms will be available. We will have them in paper. We'll have them email. We'll have a website, April the first. Probably the best thing I could tell the community, the guests, and y'all to do, around the first of April, Google Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame webpage. That's the only way I know to do stuff because I don't have the call letters with me right now. I have looked at it. Phil sent it to us, and I've had an opportunity, and I was like, I kind of was staggered a little bit with just the little bit we have on it. I think it'll be something that will help us. It will make growth in the community for athletics really special. Now, I'm through. Can I answer any questions for you about the Hall of Fame?
Any questions from board members?
I just want to say that I'm so thankful for you to come tonight. I always love listening to you speak. I think this is a great idea. I'm so glad that you guys picked this up, and I can't think of anybody better than you and Mr. Fur to be able to lead this up, and I really appreciate you doing this, and we'll definitely look to see where we can put a Hall of Fame for y'all.
Thank you. I think the key that I would like to point out, you know, we started hearing back in the early 2000s of word transparency. I want to be transparent as we can be. We're going to have a diverse board or committee. We're going to have diverse selections. We're going to have people there that can come in, and I want this, I want Charlotte Meck to call and say, "Coach Smith, we want to start a Hall of Fame. We want to build it on the foundation y'all have. How can we do that?" You know, I want other communities to see what we're doing so we can help them, but I think we can have a first-class, really first-class thing. It's like I told them, I'm not going to be a part if we don't go full bore at it in first class, and so far, we're making, within two months, we've done all this, so they're like, huh, I've kind of staggered them a little bit.
Coach, I just want to say a couple of things. When you stood up and said your name, if there's anybody here who didn't know who Eazy Smith is, they hadn't been around here very long.
Thank you, sir.
I'd say that, and we appreciate the efforts you're putting forward. It sounds great. I'll never be in that Hall of Fame because I grew up in Craven County and played my football at New Bern High School, but I hope we can be helpful to you, and we certainly support the effort and think it's a great thing. These people deserve recognition, and so we appreciate what you're doing. And I will just say, at the risk of getting Kenny mad at me, those guys you used to coach, Concord Spiders are the only spiders I ever liked.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I will say this, you could be eligible for the Hall of Fame, each of you, and let me tell you why. We do individuals, we do teams, we do coaches, we do contributors, and it's not financial contributors. It's contributors to what? Let's say you ran the Dixie Youth Baseball League. Let's just say that, or Babe Ruth, or Little League. Those are called contributors. They can be in the Hall of Fame. It's not just because you can shoot it, run, throw, catch it. There's a lot of ways, and this is something especially, and I want to say this because I lived in Concord my whole life, grew up here, but I want to make sure Midland, Harrisburg, like I said, you know, Wyancoph, Odell, those communities, Hartsel, they all feel as much a part as Concord, Kannapolis, Central, Northwest, Mount Pleasant. See, we've got to bring in Cox Mill and West Cabarrus and Hickory Ridge and all the other schools, you know, that we're trying to get in. Robinson, we've got to bring them in because they're younger than the old schools, but I do feel I'm very, I'm very humbled by my responsibility, but as you can tell, I'm going to do what I need to do, so I appreciate y'all giving us opportunity tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Before we move on, we are joined by one of our youth commissioners here this evening, so I will turn it over to him to introduce himself and let us know something about him.
All right. Thank you. My name is Nehor Kametha. I'm a senior at the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics in Durham, North Carolina, and I previously attended Cox Mill High School here in Concord, North Carolina. And I just want to say on behalf of all the youth here today representing them, it is an honor to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go back to our Miss Cabarrus County for 2025, and we have Jamie Logan. Welcome.
Hello. Apologies for being late, but I appreciate the honor to speak to you all. So, my name is Jamie Logan, and I have the incredible privilege of being Miss Cabarrus County 2025, so I will represent Cabarrus County as I compete for the title of Miss North Carolina this June. I compete throughout the Miss America Opportunity, which is the largest scholarship provider for women across the country. So, throughout my service to the community, I promote something called a Community Service Initiative, and mine is all about the importance of involvement and participation in sports. So, I do that through a variety of different ways, but two of the biggest ways that I'm doing that this year are through my partnerships statewide with Girls on the Run and Special Olympics. So, throughout my year of service, every year, I set a goal for myself, and this year, I want to do 100 appearances in 150 days from the time I was crowned Miss Cabarrus County to the time I walk into my interview for Miss North Carolina. So, I'm excited about that opportunity, and with that, a lot of people always ask, "What do you do with a title holder? How do we get them at an event?" There's so many ways for title holders to be involved, whether it's speaking, visiting with kids. The list kind of goes on and on, and we're really excited about opportunities to do anything, but I think the biggest thing to mention is that having a title holder at your event is free. So, there's no cost to have Miss Cabarrus County at one of your events, so I would love to talk to you guys if there's any events in the community coming up that you guys feel would be beneficial for Miss Cabarrus County, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to serve you all and appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the DHS Social Worker Month, and we have Commissioner Wortman that's going to read this proclamation.
Social Work Month 2025 Proclamation. Social work, compassion plus action. Whereas people have entered the social work profession for generations because they genuinely care about helping improve the welfare of people, families, communities, and our nation. Whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, "Social Work: Compassion Plus Action," embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training so they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into action that brings positive results. Whereas the social work profession has worked for generations to improve living conditions across the nation and right here in Cabarrus County. Whereas social workers follow a code of ethics, which sets as the primary mission of the social work profession, the enhancement of human well-being and meeting the basic human needs of all people, with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of those who are vulnerable and living in poverty. Whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States, with more than 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2033, and more than 130 employed currently with Cabarrus County DSS. Whereas social workers work in all parts of our society, including schools, social service agencies, veteran centers, and government, helping people, family, and communities secure services and policies they need to thrive. Whereas social workers are at the forefront of pressing issues our nation is addressing, including increased needs for mental health care, especially for children and adolescents, and substance use disorder treatment. Whereas social workers help protect millions of children from abuse and neglect, provide services and support, which helps strengthen families that are under stress and help create new families through adoption. Whereas research proves the presence of social workers in schools, hospitals, and assisted living facilities improve education and health outcomes and quality of life for students, patients, and residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Cabarrus County social workers, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do proclaim the month of March 2025 as National Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join the Board of Commissioners in Cabarrus County Department of Social Services in celebration and support of the social work profession adopted this 17th day of March 2025.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution or proclamation.
Submit.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another proclamation, National Donate to Life Month for April 2025, and Commissioner Wortman has graciously offered to read this proclamation as well. And before I read this, Lynn, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to speak a little bit to this before I read this resolution, since you typically take this one every year and it's important to you?
Well, I can say just a few words, Kenny. It's been my privilege, you know, to be a recipient of two different organ transplants over the last 30, soon be 30 years. I had the heart transplant in November of 1995. My heart came from a 17-year-old boy, and unbeknownst to me what happened, where he came from, but somewhere out there, you know, there's a mom and a dad that lost a son, and I'm walking around today with his heart. And then, my second transplant was a kidney transplant. My next-door neighbor gave me a kidney, and I got about 15 years out of that kidney, and I've been able to serve the citizens of Cabarrus County since the year 2000, soon be 20, 25 years, and all because of the Donate Life Program. It's a wonderful program, and if people, the average person knew how easy it is to save a life, there would be more people doing it, particularly when it comes to kidney transplants. When I had my kidney transplant, I wasn't in the hospital but two days, and my donor is doing fine. She still lives next door, and everybody's doing good. Of course, I've developed problems over the years, but as we get older, all of us do that, but anyway, I appreciate Kenny reading the National Donate Life Month because all the years since I've been on the board, I've been able to do that. So, Kenny, thank you for taking that place for me.
Yeah, go ahead. National Donate Life Month 2025. Whereas more than 114,944 men, women, and children in the United States currently need life-saving organ transplants, and more than 4,400 of those people are North Carolinians. And whereas an average of 17 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of donated organs. And whereas every nine minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list. And whereas providing facts about donation and dispelling misinformation and myths are key to increasing the number of people who sign up as donors. And whereas the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles plays a critical role with over 5 million North Carolinians in the state's donor registry having registered when receiving a driver's license or state ID card. And whereas one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve many more lives through tissue and cornea donation. And whereas North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation, discuss their wishes with their family, and sign up as donors via NCDMV or online at www.donatelifenc.org/register. And whereas residents of Cabarrus County have been touched by donations as recipients of life-saving transplants and as members of donor families who have literally given others a second chance at life. And now be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Cabarrus County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be National Donate Life Month. In Cabarrus County, and urge our residents to give serious thought to the importance of eye, organ, and tissue donation, and to consider joining the North Carolina Donor Registry, and further to notify their family members that they have done so, adopted this 17th day of March 2025.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Submit.
Second.
All right. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item on our agenda is the informal public comments. The clerk has the cards that were filled out before public comment. She reads your name. You'll approach the podium, and you have three minutes, and I believe there's a clock there that keeps up with the time, so as she reads your name, if you'll approach the microphone.
First, we have Ray Helms.
So, I had a totally different subject I was going to speak on tonight, but I observe things as I see them, and I'm going to talk to you about something that happened a couple of months ago. The county attorney sat right there, and his wife sat right behind him, and I've never witnessed such disrespect in all my life of how you treated a man that gives service to this county. Whether you agreed with his decisions or not, I'm going to tell you right now, that was some of the most disrespectful ways of treating a person in his condition I've ever Then to top it off, you sit this man right here, right in front of him, as a slap in the face while he's sat there in humility. He handled himself very gracefully, which y'all were some of the most disrespectful and disgraceful people I've ever seen. And you, sir, you need to get out of that seat and get over there where you belong. That's principle right there. You don't belong in Commissioner Shue's seat. You belong in yours.
I was just invited to fill in as well.
No, no, there's no excuse for it. I'm a man of principle and a man of respect. That's principle and respect. Get over there where you belong. And don't say nothing because that's my right to be able to say it, so don't sit there and violate my rights like you accused everybody else of doing yours. We need to start learning respect and principle. This board's lacking a whole lot of it, but I'm going to point it out, and that's one that we need to observe tonight, and you just need to get over there where you belong.
Thank you. I know that sometimes whenever you come up from this sides of the podium, it's very difficult to realize which seat. There's been times that I've accidentally sat in this seat. I'm, you know, just want to put that out there, but thank you. Thanks. No disrespect to you, Commissioner Shue.
Jeter Anderson.
Good evening. Jeter Anderson. I'm coming up here to talk about our Cabarrus DSS. It's not doing so well. I had a concern about a child today, a new concern, and I tried to report it, but my reports get blocked, can't get them out, can't get my report through. I told Elise Pugh. She says I'm not allowed to have concerns anymore about whatever concerns. Why not? I'm alive. I can have as many concerns as I want, especially if I don't have any answers to my questions. So, I reported the maltreatment of a child. Do any of y'all get any injections? Well, y'all get this injection. I inject child's mind with my words and everything, and my concern is that this child that was taken is getting injections she don't need to be getting. My sister was a federal helpless child, and I have reason to believe maltreatment's going on to a child, and this child is now receiving the injections that my sister was getting. And why do I think this? I think it because my sister's diagnosis was gone. David Goldberg says he knew she was a helpless child from the beginning, and at the end, she wasn't a helpless child. Well, that meant the child that they took was the helpless child. So, we give a report at the intake to Susan Ness at your DSS. What does she do with that report? Well, she can't do nothing with it because it's a conflict of interest. I mentioned a few county employees, Jay White, Jessica Bridges, DeShandra, DeLisha Vanderpool, DeShandra Christian, they're all, they all put children's welfare in danger, every single one of them, and Elise Pugh does too. You put children's welfare in danger when you make sure reports don't get through. So, what does Susan Ness do? She sends the report to Charlotte, Charlotte DSS. Charlotte DSS then calls, says it's very concerning, very concerning what we hear. However, we know nothing about it, so therefore, it's gone. And we don't get, we don't get our concern handled because they sent it to some place that's going to put it in the trash from the beginning, and here I am with my concern, this poor child's probably being mistreated, and why do we not get these concerns reported? Is it Elise Pugh's kid now? It's probably her kid. That's probably why we can't make a report on her, but I still have a concern about this child. I think this child's at danger. I think she's at risk, and I think she's being maltreated, and definitely needs to be looked into. Y'all need to address my concern. This gentleman's a sergeant. He knows how to make a report, give a report. Why do y'all disrespect veterans like this? Take his concern, take my concern, address it, address it about a child, and let us relax, or you can keep not picking up your phone when someone calls you.
Jerry Anderson. I'm here about the scandal of my child being taken out of my house. Anybody's got a child they don't want them taken out of their house wrongly. Now, I'm going to address something like Ray Helms did. Y'all see me sitting down during this man's prayer right here. It's a reason I sit down, and you know the reason I sit down. How can a man be talking God and talk about a family wrongly? I'm disappointed in you, and I sure hope that God helps you instead of getting up here telling prayers for other people. Regardless, DSS neglected duty when my child lost this status right here, being a helpless child. She got no protection. Abuse of power, DSS. Why? This scandal appears to be DSS workers overstepping the authority by giving out temporary custody forms, which happened here more than once, which give out temporary custody forms, which only a judge can do. This raises concerns about potential child wear, welfare mismanagement, and abuse of I come up here because the Lord told me to come up here and face y'all, but he didn't think I would be facing people with plastic ears. He thought y'all would have ears enough to listen to me. This shouldn't happen in our community. No child should be taken from parents who love them and care about them. I don't know why the Lord would tell me to come up here, but you're supposed to hear. This is not about money. She might have been taken for money. Nobody's asked for money. I'm asking for my child that rightly deserves to be here. My daughter has schizophrenia, post-traumatic stress, and borderline personality disorder. Anybody knows mental illness knows they, she might have been competent in some areas, but all three of them mental illnesses made her incompetent in most areas, and she was put through DSS and lost this. Lost it. Who got it? Well, my granddaughter lived in the same house as she did, has the same names except the first name. It could, they could have said a helpless child. They just inadvertently gave it to her.
You said it right this time. Thank you. So, good afternoon or good evening. I am coming to you today. I want to preface this conversation by saying I respect all of you. I appreciate you stepping up to work for this community and to work for all the constituents in this community. However, I'm a bit concerned about things that you all have done over the last several months. One of them is you told many of us that you would lower our taxes, Larry and Laura. I heard you at the polls telling many voters that you were going to lower our taxes, and I am not understanding how you will be able to do that by firing our long-term attorney who was charging us $150 an hour and then hiring a new attorney that will now charge us almost $300 an hour. That doesn't look like lowering our taxes to me. Then firing the long-term county manager and replacing that county manager with an increase of $6,000 a year. Again, that doesn't seem like it's lowering our taxes. Then come to find out, and I truly hope this is not the case, but it looks like the Secretary of the State has confirmed that this new county manager, Chris, is your friend and former business partner. That sounds like backdoor deals to me and does not sound like transparency, which every single last one of you ran on. I truly hope that is not the case, but it sounds like that is the case, and it's very concerning to me, and you owe your constituents a reason for this employee, this new employee beginning, if that is in fact the case. I remember some time ago, many of you were talking about calling the SBI on a former county commission. It sounds like some of you need to call them on yourselves from where I'm standing. You guys, in my opinion, are beginning along this road, two of you very new, in wasting taxpayer money. I will tell you personally in my house, my bills have gone up $307 a month. It's in relation to insurance taxes and the taxes from Cabarrus County, so I will be personally watching all of you to see how you decrease my taxes over the next year, which is what you told many of us. Now, I want to take my last few minutes to speak to the public. This is our county, not theirs. They were elected to serve us, all of us, with no restrictions whatsoever. Doesn't matter what you look like, where you live, long as you in Cabarrus County. These folks up here signed up to work for you. I need for you all to show up to these meetings. I need for y'all to speak out when you see things are going wrong. Hold these folks accountable. They work for us. And then lastly, elections have consequences. I think y'all all know that. We've seen that over the last three months, and one of you almost didn't make it up here. Keep that in the forefront and in your mind when you start making these deals behind closed doors.
Ingrid Nurse.
Great day. I'm Ingrid Nurse, for the people, by the people, one raised in Cabarrus County. The concerns I have today address that as of 2020, since this bureau, our population is 225,804 people. There are approximately 400 religious congregations. There are approximately four hundred religious congregations. And the reason why I'm asking about church and state, are we supposed to be doing a prayer? Are we supposed to be doing a moment of silence? Because some of people came to me and asked me, why was that not known that now they're praying? A moment of silence can be more inclusive option, allowing individuals to reflect, pray, and meditate according to their own beliefs. Next, and according to Acts nineteen fifteen, and the evil spirit answered and said, Jesus I know, and Paul I know, but who are you? The spirit, the spirit acknowledges that Jesus and Paul, he didn't know, but does not know the people who are trying to cast it out. So, that's why we're saying, while we're doing, while we consider a moment of silence versus a prayer. And of course, inquiry minds want to know taxpayers. Next, I want to address the ongoing expenses that are continuing to contribute to our seven million dollar deficit. Like stating, Kannapolis has a library, Harrisburg has a library, Concord has two libraries, and Mount Pleasant has a library. Why wasn't Midland given this option to take care of their own lease like those cities are? Is Ma- is Midland being treated more valuable than all other five counties, or cities, excuse me? It is time to become a pa- it is time for us to become accountable so that we know how our taxpayer dollars are being spent. In closing, how you propose we address this deficit and outside of campaign promises, stop paying expenses that are not warranted by the taxpayer. Additionally, I did speak to some homeless, some of our homeless population who expressed the need for a safe place to park and stay, as well as access mobile showers and services for their pets. What protections are in place to safeguard our homeless population and address these essential needs? In closing, that was a false narrative. Last week, a gentleman said, we had a conversation. That's a false narrative. In all actuality, um, outside of this room, at these meetings, we don't usually, none of us usually speak unless I know. Like I said, I speak to everybody, but we don't usually speak. Again, Ingrid for the people, by the people, because I am the people.
Kenneth Forrest.
Yes, I'm here today about some taxes. Somebody ain't doing their job. When you take a woman and a man, it ain't getting none but a fixed in- income. And they send you a tax bill that you gotta pay three hundred dollars or save three hundred dollars or let y'all take it out to pay our taxes at the end of the year. Now, in my situation, I ain't got three hundred dollars a month. It takes everything that me and my wife makes to pay our bills. But no, all y'all think about is taxes, 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 taxes. You recognize us when the tax bill come, but other than them, no. We ain't even in the world. And somebody, like I say, just ain't doing their job. And it's time for you to start. I was born and raised in Cabarrus County. I'm seventy-eight years old. Don't mind telling yous, I'm from old school. You ain't got none of that no more. It's money, 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 money. That's all you want. You send these buses from the city all the way out to the mall carrying four and five people. Dollar and a quarter a trip. Now, how in the world are you gonna pay the man or the woman that is driving? How you gonna keep these buses up? There ain't no way in the world. But who's gonna foot the rest? Us. And we done raised our kids in school. You bringing more families in here. They gotta have more schools. I'm paying for their schooling. And they ain't been around near the time I have, and they ain't going to. Now, it's time to get something done. I don't, I, I, I just don't believe we got people up here that it, that ain't, I don't wanna say it, but I'm gonna say it, ain't got no common sense. You take these people, all y'all wanna do is sit behind of a desk. And, uh, like I say, you know, we paying for these buses to run up and down the road. You've got boys out here where, so I worked construction for twenty-seven years.
If you'll finish up your comments, your, your time is expired.
See, that's the problem right there. You don't wanna hear it all. Then you let other men get up here and spend fifteen, twenty minutes. Now, what's the difference in them and me?
This is public comment section. Your, your time is expired. Thank you. I'll give you a call after this meeting.
You what?
I said I will give you a call after this meeting this week, and we'll discuss.
Okay, what you telling me is what I mean.
I'm, believe me.
And what I wanna hear. But Donald may be ba- be gonna be back.
Thank you, thank you.
Chris Cranston.
Hello, I'm Chris Cranston, an overtaxed Concord man. Thank you to those who have sacrificed their time to be here and to those listening online. I am inviting every ear to join our Facebook group, Cabarrus County Citizens Against Tax Hikes and For Government Transparency. Myself and the entire group has come under fire for not being transparent, and those same voices have demanded the immediate resignations of newly voted-in sitting chairman and the just hired county manager, very serious demands, so I immediately started to dig. Turns out, the accusation is Meesmer had an unannounced friendly relationship and even potentially done business with the new manager. So, I asked myself and others if Meesmer, Larry and Laura wrote up this new county's manager's contract to include sweetheart best friend deals? Did they give Chris's buddy an exorbitant salary with tens of thousands in thank you bonuses? Did they award him car allowances? Did they include insane and nonsensical things like being awarded five hundred thousand dollars for being fired for cause? Did they lie to the public about these things, telling us one thing in open session and doing another enclosed? Did they form a posse of men who go and ensure the county was fleeced for over twenty million above appraisal value in land purchases? Did they hide those appraisals and send half-witted replacement costs to the LGC board instead? Did they violate policy and tell us it's not breaking the law? Did Chris Meesmer demand we put his buddy's name on top of buildings at taxpayers' expense and creating a resolution so nobody can change his personal desires? Nope. It turns out they did none of those things. Every one of those I just listed were actually done by the last commission. Werman's voice over all others is over. Scream at the sky. Do your BS and attitude routine if you want, while Chris, Larry and Laura do the work we elected them to do. We have seen what career politicians and the most experienced bring. Bloated salaries and a dismissive attitude towards the taxpayer. You can do your thing, but understand the gaslighting is no longer working. Too many of the little people are onto the game. Too many of us see through the politics, and we go demand real government transparency. How many, where, and what our taxes are being spent on? Please stop playing in the mud. Get up, clean up, and start acting like men and women who care about things like taxes and the citizens. Chris, next time, just abstain to vote like Steve Morris on getting his name in lights. It counts as a yes, and that leaves the skyscreamers less to cry about. Plus, you might qualify for the Friends and Family Financial Bonus Referral Program Cabarrus County has in place for its employees with, when referring others. Right or wrong, I currently trust your judgment, and I'm glad you know more about the new manager's character than a few interviews allow. Don't give these folks any ammo. They were already upset at the firing of Downs, and this level-one transgression will be treated like a DEFCON five emergency as they were already upset. Keep plowing, keep striving to lower our tax rate. I don't care if it's a penny at a time. The increases must end now, and for that to happen, the three of you must try your best to ignore the naysayers and distractions. Ignore the BS and attitude, and keep pounding for the common Cabarrus County citizen.
Jim Quick.
I will not have that kind of energy. First of all, Youth Commissioner, uh, so glad that you're here. I had the opportunity to tour your school earlier this year. It's an impressive campus, and thank you for all you're doing, and it's just an honor that a student from Cabarrus County is at your school. Uh, Commissioners, I just wanted to encourage you. You feel a lot today. I've read a lot on social media. There's a, there's a mission that you all have, and you've heard senior citizens today talk. Our county is in a long-term funding deficit. Our schools have a billion dollars of need, and I'm here to encourage the five of you, and Lynn, it's so great that you're with us tonight, the five of you to find solutions to move our county forward. Yes, all of us have a voice. All of us should be here to be able to hold you accountable. But the end of the day, I want to encourage you to find a way to work together to lower our taxes, to build our schools, to treat and bu- treat our county employees great, and also provide facilities which our county needs. That's what the taxpayers need you to do, and that's what we're asking you to do. The county tax, the county elected official, elections certainly said that we want to change in our policies and our procedures here in Cabarrus County. We raised the taxes by nearly a hundred million dollars in the last evaluation, and the last commission spent almost every dollar of it. And so, that's what we're hearing from citizens. I got my mortgage bill. My taxes went up. My monthly payments got up. I haven't gotten a pay raise in two years, but somehow I have to make that difference. And I feel terrible for senior citizens that have a fixed income. And so, despite the noise and despite everything, what we're asking you to do is find a way to save money and bring our county fiscal situation into streamlined position so that we once again can have stability in our county, and I thank you for your time.
Paul Wenish.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. I just had cataract surgery today, so I'm a little fuzzy in my viewing here. My name is Paul Wenish, and I'm a county and Concord resident for two decades. Um, in that time, I've seen the cu- uh, county evolve from an agricultural community to industrial and urbanized community. With that evolution, the government management doesn't seem to have kept up. Twenty twenty-five, um, will be a very poor year. Twenty twenty-five and beyond, uh, will have finis- financial problems. Some of these exposures start, uh, the year with a financial debt. We've just heard talk about that, and, uh, this is likely to have, uh, several million dollars to recover. Also, the dismantling of the federal government is likely to impact several, uh, service providers within the county, most apparent of this being the Cabarrus County school system. They'll, they'll almost certainly lose twenty-six million dollars they currently get from the federal government. While we talked about Cabarrus, uh, county schools, let's review the county's obligation. The state law says, uh, for school buildings, the Board of Commissioners shall be given a reasonable amount of time to provide the funding which they need upon investigating what they're doing. If I go look at history, and history is a great teacher, in twenty fifteen, there was a study done for how well does the county do for education? That report, um, is online. It's on the Cabarrus Board System. And if you look at it, it's all red for the year twenty twenty-five. That's this year, okay? They should be in deep trouble this year for, um, space and teachers. Um, beyond that, in twenty seventeen, there was a law passed that changed the capacity of a, of a classroom from twenty-nine to seventeen for K through three. Not one plan that I've seen from the Board or any other planning has adjusted for that thirty percent growth in capacity just caused by that law in the elementary schools. So, uh, not, um, I can't do it without the glasses, not running each room, um, to full capacity also causes you to drop the, uh, the, it causes you to increase the number of rooms you need because you can't fit as many in one school. As you break down a large number, which they talk about the capacity of a school, that's great if you're a one-room schoolroom, okay? It's not the way they run. They run into seventeen kids in a class, and that is then split by schools. So, it really causes to make the numbers go up even more. In twenty sixteen, the district's initial requirement has, uh, been rebuffed ever since twenty sixteen, and the Cabarrus County School Board now is the largest county, uh, that has, um, non-compliant sa- sanitary code buildings in the state.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jean Chandler.
Hello. I'm Jean Chandler. I live in Kannapolis. As a matter of fact, I've built a house next to my parents'. I've got the same address I've had all my life. I also held several appointments representing Cabarrus County, but that's got nothing to do with what I've wanted to say tonight. I just want to make a statement, and it's all on record. All of this can be checked. First, Chris. I've known Chris for over thirteen years. I knew him the first time he served on the Commission Board. Over and over, he spoke for the people and was ignored and made to feel, made to feel his input did not matter at all. Most of us would have just walked away. I probably would have. But Chris kept voting in the best interest of the people. I just want to say thank you, Chris, and you're doing a wonderful job, and we love you.
Reverend Leonard Jarvis.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak directly to you, Chris. Unfortunately, my comments are just antithetical to those just mentioned. When you took this position, you put your hand on the Bible, and you swore to uphold certain morals and ethics. Based on the reports we received in this recent week, you have not held up to those standards. So, I come here tonight to urge you to do what is right. The gentleman spoke about the prophet Daniel. If you were doing as of the prophet Daniel, we wouldn't be standing here tonight. And two, I find it offensive when Mr. Pittman prays, invokes the Holy Spirit, and here we here tonight because of some, this bad report that we received about some things you've done. I wish that this board would not take the lead from the nation, from the White House. That you would take the lead from God's word, and that is to be inclusive and that to allow all people to participate in this government. I am, find it appalling, three things that, uh, of many that I want to bring to your attention. Number one, I experienced some time ago during the Board of Education meeting that many of you came there and bullied the Board of Education to put your person on the board. That's wrong. That's wrong. Two is that just recently, there was a rumor, and hopefully was a rumor, that you were wanted to remove one of the African-American people or persons who was on one of the committees. That's wrong. That's not right. And three is that, um, by firing the Farmer County, um, Congress, I mean Commissioner Downs or the Farmer County Manager, this man has lived in this county for years, raised his family. And I wonder where is the empathy on this board yet? for years, raised his family. And I wonder where is the empathy on this board yet? All of you call yourselves Christians. And I guess you need to put that in, you know, in quotes. Are you really Christians? Because we have no other standard to stand on but that of the Holyess, the True Word, the True Word. The Bible says, "Do unto others as you have them to do unto you." And would you want to have been treated like that? The Bible says, Matthew 16, "If you have an alth with a brother, go to him, talk to him." This should never have been done. This man has spent almost 13 or so years. He should be honored for the service he gave so that this could have not been done in the manner it was.
Wesley Honeycutt.
Wes Honeycutt, Midland. I didn't really plan much to say tonight. I've had a couple conversations with you all. Kenny, you and I talked earlier in the week. I did want to address one of the comments that was made by an earlier speaker because I feel like it's implying that I'm a liar. And I just wanted to point out, Ingrid, I was just mentioning that you and I had talked in the parking deck a while back. Maybe you didn't remember that, but I just was commenting that you were kind to me and personally, I have, we align different politically, but personally, I've always thought that you were nice to me. It was not meant to be a false narrative and it happened. So I just feel like I needed to say that. I know there's a lot of discussion right now about the county manager. I'm sure there's going to be more discussion later tonight. And I'm not shy about sharing my beliefs. And I've said that, you know, I would have handled it differently. I would have disclosed it. And see, I'm willing to stand up here and say that even though I directionally agree with what Chris is doing, I'm able to look at one thing and say, I don't agree with that. And anyone who's not willing to do that for anyone that you align with is pretty disingenuous. I love my wife very much and we agree most of the time, but we disagree. I loved her so much that I married her. And if anybody tries to take her away from me, then that's, just don't do that. So I think that we would all be better to be willing to have a differing view. And I say that to say that, you know, I see other cameras here tonight and I know they're going to try to vilify you. I wish that same passion would have been here when the last commission was willfully withholding And I don't say that to say that two wrongs make a right because there's been a lot of Bible quoting up here and whatnot. And, you know, my position on things is to not repay evil for evil. That's why I come up here. A lot of times I try to bring the temperature down because if we all just yell at each other, everybody's just mad and nothing gets accomplished. But I say that to say, if the qualification to sit up there is to never do something wrong or procedures wrong, then you all need to leave and so do all of us. I made a comment last time about one of the things that I try to evaluate is the plank in my eye before I point out the speck in yours all. And I don't always get it right. But for someone to come up here and wag their finger and pretend that they somehow are righteous on their own is a fallacy. Thank you.[846.82][846.82][applause]
I'm sorry, the handwriting is difficult on this one, but I think it's Mark Monroe.
My name is Mark Monroe. I live in Harrisburg. I just wanted to mention a couple of thoughts. A lot of tough comments tonight and I don't know that they're all deserved. The county is where it's at today because of the past four, six, eight years of leadership that we've had. And the county, the majority of the county voted for some changes. And we have got people that have said that they're going to help make changes. And y'all can't make changes overnight. It's going to take some time. And there's going to be some things that you're not going to be able to change real quick. It may take a few years to make some changes. When I've managed projects and when I've worked on challenging things, I bring people with me that are going to support me, that are going to be a team player and that are going to work to my focus to get a project done. And I think that any political environment, they, people bring people with them to help them accomplish their goals. And sometimes it's tough. Some people have to go and new people have to be brought in. And not everybody's going to be happy about that. So I'm encouraged that the board is trying to create an environment that's going to support them and support their vision for changes that everybody seems to think need to happen. But the changes aren't going to happen if the old ways stay in place. There have to be new ways. There have to be new changes. There has to be new ways of thinking. And so I'm encouraged that y'all are attempting to do that. That said, it's only been a few months. And so I'm encouraged to stay focused and support you guys and to be positive. And let's see where this thing heads. The tax rate is out of the majority's control. That's already been done. We're going to, we're going to look at all of that. We're going to look at a lot of things. But I'm encouraged and I think everybody should be encouraged that you're making changes, you're not doing the same thing and going to do the same result. And that's hard. So I just wanted to share some positive thoughts. So, thank you.[1010.01][1010.01][applause]
Crystal Swayze.
Good morning. Good evening, rather. My name is Crystal Swayze. I live in Concord, North Carolina. I've lived here all my life. So I've seen a lot of things go on here. So I'm going to talk about specific dates. On October the 2nd, 2024, the ACM financing was approved by the LGC in Raleigh. In the work session on October the 7th, 2024, Mike Downs' contract was approved unanimously by Chairman Meesmer, Mr. Wortman, Lynn Schu, what's your name, Fur, thank you, and Steve Morris. And to read those notes, it says, "Upon of Commissioner Wortman, seconded by Commissioner Fur, and unanimously carried, the board approved to go into closed session to discuss personnel as authorized by NCGS 143 318.11. Upon motion, Commissioner Meesmer, seconded by Vice Chair Schu, and unanimously carried, the board moved to come out of closed session. Upon motion of Chairman Morris, seconded by Commissioner Wortman, and unanimously carried, the board granted the county manager, Mike Downs, a 2.5% merit increase based on the scale used by all County, Cabarrus County employees, as well as the 1% cost of living increase raised by all Cabarrus County employees. In addition, a thank you bonus was granted to be paid quarterly totally $30,000, $7,500 per quarter over the next year and continued travel for the travel allowance of $1,200." Upon motion, Commissioner Fur, Commissioner Wortman, and unanimously carried the meeting adjourned at 5:46 PM. Fast forward, Mike Downs was fired on January the 21st, 2025. On March the 6th, 2025, Mike Downs' attorney sent a letter to Mr. Peterson. And at this point, no response has been received from this board. This is going to cost the taxpayers of Cabarrus County $500,000. Chairman Meesmer approved it unanimously with the rest of the board members at that time on October the 7th, 2024. Just before this meeting was started, the Independent Tribune put out an article that says, "Downs prepares to take legal action against Cabarrus County for money owed." Former county manager Mike Downs is preparing to take legal action against Cabarrus County in his failed effort to receive the full amount of money, including severance pay that is owed to him. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, following a lengthy closed session on January 21st, fired Mike Downs, who served as county manager since 2011. The commissioners approved terminating his contract with just cause. Again, the contract and the letter, the firing, was based off the ACM building, which was approved on October the 2nd, 2024. The board unanimously voted on October the 7th, 2024, to give this man a raise. You cannot go back and say that he was fired for the ACM building when it was unanimously stated and approved of. I am, on the daily, 8% is being raised. It's Attorney Peterson. Why was he not given a response by March 14th?
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you very much for y'all's time.[1221.21][1221.21][applause]
All right. That's all we have for informal public comments. We do not have any items under our new business, so we will move right into receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Please forgive me. We did skip an item. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So I move to approve.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt just for a minute?
Sure.
This is Commissioner Schu. Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before we approve the consent agenda, I wanted to say a few things. I've been quiet, just listening to everyone. And, but this is Commissioner Schu, participating in this meeting virtually. First, I want to express my sincere appreciation for those that have supported me over the last few months while I have experienced physical challenges that have prevented me from being at the meetings in person. I have nerve damage issues in my left leg that has kept me from walking. And so I'm taking physical therapy and I'm trying to move around a little bit. And I'm going to beat this. I've beat worse things than this. And so I'm going to beat it. It's just going to take me some time. And I'm making some good progress. But I'm truly grateful for all the well wishes and all the calls and the cards and support that you've shown me. Tonight, I want to ensure that the public is aware of some things that have occurred during this time. Throughout the conversations regarding the employment of the new county manager that I, that has already been held and will continue on tonight, I have been largely, if not completely excluded from those conversations. I have not seen any of the county manager applications. I have not participated in any of the discussions, nor have I been consulted about my opinion regarding this process.
Mr. Schu, we're going to, we're going to get to general board comments, general comments by board members later on in our agenda. So can you hold off for that discussion that we'll have in probably five minutes? That will be the appropriate area on the agenda to have this discussion.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes. We'll come back to it, I assure you. All right. So we do not have any items on new business. Do we have? Okay, we had a, we had a motion. We had a second. So, okay, do I have a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. So now we're gonna, we don't have any items on the new business, so we're going to go to reports. And we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to various boards. So do we have any comments from board members regarding their liaison appointments?
Several mine were canceled because of the bad weather that were expected. But we did receive an award from North Carolina Main Street, USA, March 12th. And we received that award in Mooresville. And what we received that award for was for the best public building improvement. And it was presented to Ceiling Architects Messer Construction Company in Cabarrus County. And that was for the Cabarrus County Courthouse. So several of us went down and accepted that award on behalf of Cabarrus County. So.
Any other reports?
I have a report. I was able to attend my first soil and water meeting. And they might as well have spoken German to me because it would have been exactly the same thing that I understood from that. But I also was assured that that is the feeling that most people get when they attend the soil and water meeting for the first time. But I did want to talk about a couple of important events that are coming up. So April the 29th, at 5:30 at The Barn at Frank Lisk, there will be the awards for the winners of the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation Contest. They had over 3,000 entries for that. And if you are interested in attending, if you would RSVP Abby at Soil and Water by April the 15th. And her phone number is 704-920-3300. And then I also wanted to talk about, Cabarrus County is going to have the first annual Creek Week set for September 22nd through the 28th. This aims to celebrate and raise awareness for the importance of our local waterways and their crucial role in maintaining the health of our environment. On September 22nd would be the kickoff and the 23rd would be a community art upcycle project. The 24th is a water-themed movie night at Frank Lisk, and I think they're watching Finding Nemo. The 25th is a water-themed trivia at Cabarrus Brewing. The 26th is a frog walk and fire chat at Camp Spencer. The 27th is a creek stomp, duck rescue paddle boats and all of that at Frank Lisk. And the 28th is World River Day. So this is an exciting event that's coming up in September. And also you can call Abby as well, again, if you want information on that too. Thank you.
Commissioner Pittman?
All right. I will, I've got a couple of them. The WASC meeting was canceled last month due to weather. I think we all had some of those. We, I will remind everyone that the Active Living and Wellness Expo is on this Wednesday, March 19th, at the Cabarrus Arena from 10:30 to 2. And at this Wellness Expo, there is exercise demonstrations, free health screenings that include blood pressure, strength and balance, vision and hearing, updated medication drop-off. There's also, it's free parking, free admission, and you also get a free lunch if you attend. And so this is Wednesday, March 19th, at the Cabarrus Arena from 10:30 to 2. The last thing I'll report on is the fair. The newly newly appointed fair committee had their first meeting last month. And I have a graphic we're going to put up on the screen. There's been a lot of ideas floating around with this committee and some ways to enhance the fair experience. And there, as you can see on this slide here, one of our number one issues that we are going to have to tackle is attendance. We are down from, at the peak year, we had 85,000, a little over 85,000. Last year, our attendance was 63,000. And of course, you can see a year that we had a hurricane that, that is absolutely going to affect attendance. Number one issue that the committee's going to work on is bringing new ideas and enhance the fair experience so we can have higher attendance. There's ideas about having a rodeo on the weekends at the arena facility, at the arena itself, that will coincide with the fair. And potentially, you buy a ticket to the rodeo, you get a free entry to the fair, a reduced amount. So working through some of those things are going to bring some new talent to the fair. I also have some new food items and some new displays. So that is the report on the fair committee. And that's all I've got. So I guess we will now move on to, Commissioner Schu, do you have anything to report on your liaison appointments?
No, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, on that.
Yes. Okay. We're going to now move into general comments by board members. And I know Commissioner Wortman has wanted to discuss this new manager position, or the newly appointed manager, so I can turn the floor over to him. Commissioner Schu, if you want, you had started into it. If you want to go first.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't have, but just another couple minutes is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So at the last work session that I attended, I participated virtually, just like I am now. And there was no acknowledgement given that I was even present at the meeting, which is strictly guided by our approved rules of procedure for the board. I was also excluded from the closed session following that meeting. And I had no ability to hear or participate in those critical discussions. to hear or participate in those critical discussions. Like every other commissioner on this board, I was elected by the people of Cabarrus County to serve. And I tell you the truth, I want to serve, even though in my physically challenged condition, I want to serve because I'm going to get better. But regardless of any difficulties that I may deal with, my physical limitations have in no way impacted my ability to think and contribute to the discussion, even though I may not be present in the room. Moving forward, as this board attempts to deal with the very serious breach of trust that has occurred with the public, I hope that I will be afforded the opportunity to participate and do the job that was, I was elected to do by the people of Cabarrus County. Once again, I appreciate your time and allowing me to make these explanations to you. Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shue. And just to address a couple of your comments, I've absolutely tried to include you as much as we could. It was since, it's been since the beginning of January that we have had you present at one of these meetings. And I have certainly tried to reach out to you by phone, have discussion with you. I apologize, I did not acknowledge that you were on the video at the last meeting. It was, it was pretty apparent to everyone in the room that you were on the video because we could hear you speaking before the meeting. And so I felt as though everyone was aware of that. And so I've absolutely tried to include you. There's been times where I have called to have discussions with you about county issues. And one of the more recent phone calls we had, you told me not to bother calling you back. So, you know, I'll be certainly happy to give you a call again at any time to discuss some of this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, if you remember the night before you fired the county manager and also the county attorney, if you remember, you and I had a conversation. And, you know, you actually called me and asked me what I thought about it. And I told you at that time that I felt like the county attorney need to be left alone. The man has served us well for 20 years and has dedicated that much time and effort to us. And to my knowledge, we've never had any complaints. We've never had any objections to his work. And I suggested to you that we leave things like they are and let Mr. Cook leave as our county attorney at his will, not because of something that we done. And, you know, and Ted Gump, the next day, you fired him. And, you know, and the same thing with the county manager. We asked you to not do that, but you did anyway. And the worst thing about it is, is, you know, when you were having the discussions about the new county manager and the new attorney, you never called me, you never included me in any of those discussions. And am I not a one filth of this board?
I appreciate that.
And I'm supposed to have, you know, I'm supposed to be able to speak just as much as you can. But anyway, you know, I don't know how we're going to go forward, Mr. Chairman, with these issues that we're having to deal with.
I will return, I will go back to giving you a call regularly, as I did before, before you told me not to call you back. So I'll be happy to give you a call. There's been a couple of times where I had called you and you said you, and I'm very sympathetic of what you're going through, and I understand, but there was times that you told me that you just could not talk about county business, so.
Well, Chris, let's clear that up while we on it. You brought it up, so let's clear it up. What I told you was, I said, "Chris, don't call me no more about issues that you and your two other county commissioners have already decided on. If you've already decided on it, you don't need my opinion or my vote because you've already had you and your other two commissioners." So I said, "If that's all you got to call me for is to talk about something that you've already decided, then don't call me."
Yeah.
That's what happened, Chris, and you know that's the truth.
Yeah. Well, you just proved what I said. But thank you very much for your comments. We'll move on. We'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Wartman, who has a few comments.
Were you done, Commissioner Shue?
Yes, thank you.
All right. There's been a lot of talking, so what I wanted to do is I wanted to describe the actual hiring process that we went through. There's been a lot of, a lot of questions about that. You came to us and you asked if we wanted to be a part of the hiring process. Commissioner Shue wasn't here. I think you were sick that day, but Commissioner Lindsay and I said, "Absolutely, we would love to be a part of that process." I didn't agree with firing Mike, but we talked and I looked at it as that was our chance to move forward. There's been a lot of, a lot of differences up here, but when we talked, I said, "This might be the chance that we can maybe put a unanimous decision forward and show people that we can, we can get past that." You came in daily, you reviewed the applications that were turned in, and you earmarked the ones that you thought, thought were good. We reviewed those same applications in closed session that one night, confirmed that several of yours were good, got rid of some. And then from there, you asked us if we wanted to be a part of the interview process. Absolutely. Both of us agreed, absolutely. And I gave you two days that would work with my work schedule. And graciously enough, you set that up. You set that up to where I could be a part of it. You and Commissioner Lindsay went the first day, and then you and I went the second day. Three total, but only two that happened. That's pretty factual of the process. I know the day that, that we were here, the, what people have talked about, that was never disclosed verbally and writing anywhere by anyone. At all. And I told you when you called me, I would not have voted had that been disclosed. I absolutely would not have voted. And I told you, it didn't matter if it was somebody that you knew, or Commissioner Lindsay knew, or Commissioner Pittman, or Lynn, or myself, I wouldn't have put the county in that spot, especially after we just fired somebody with 38 years. And your response was, you didn't want to poison or taint my opinion of the candidate. And in response to that, you could have still told me after the interview, where I'd already made up my own mind on who we wanted. You could have still told me, at that point, I would have already made my mind up. But the way this looks now is horrific. I'm not, it looks like the headline is going to be, "The county fires a 63-year-old man with 38 years' experience, places him with somebody under 40 with none because he's your friend and former partner." That's exactly what this headline looks like. And I would not have voted for that had it been disclosed. And I would like to know, I did not know. I would like to know if Commissioner Lindsay and Commissioner Pittman knew about this relationship, and I did not. And I've got more I'd like to say, but I just want to know if they knew before I go on.
So I'm happy to answer your question. Yes, I did know that Chris and Sean had, had some type of relationship. The discussion was had of that Sean would have to go through the process, just like everyone else, have to fill out an application, have to go through HR, same protocol as anybody else would have to go through.
How did you find out?
Chris told me.
Let me, let me, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I prepared a statement that's probably going to clear up a lot of your, a lot of your questions.
I'll let you get to that.
And so, you know, the headline is going to be that we're bringing in someone that we can trust, someone, there is change. As one of the speakers said, there's going to be change, and that is, and that's tough. It's tough on folks. But, you know, there, there is going to be change. And, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. But I'm going, I'm going to read a statement that I prepared to clear up some of this and so that everyone understands what is going on here. So I'm going to be direct and to the point whenever addressing this. "Mr. Newton and I created an LLC nearly a year ago to explore a business opportunity," nearly, excuse me, "nearly a decade ago, to explore a business opportunity. The opportunity fizzled out, we dissolved the LLC, and there was never a dime made between myself or Mr. Newton. I will remind you that monies have never exchanged hands between him or I. He has given, he has never given me a campaign contribution, nor endorsed my candidacy in elections. He has never done business with the county, nor, he has never done business with the county, nor are we in business together currently. Nothing illegal has been done. When the manager's position was open and advertised through various employment platforms that pushed the advertised position nationwide, including LinkedIn, Mr. Newton expressed interest, and I encouraged him to apply, as I did with anyone else that had interests. He applied, he went through the process that included interviews, and he was ultimately selected on the merits, on his merits, and not based upon who, not based upon who he knew. I also would like to remind folks that this board has the authority to hire whomever they choose without going through an application process or interview process. And that's exactly how the previous manager was hired. I didn't want that in this situation. I wanted an open application process, and that's what we got. I never used my position to influence the process. I never pressured the HR department, never pressured my fellow commissioners, or created a situation where anyone felt they had to vote for Mr. Newton. He's one of the sharpest strategists I know, brilliant with numbers, and a great track record in the financial services sector. Look at the budget mess that we've inherited from the previous board. We are facing a $62 million deficit in the, in the next five years and need someone who can confidently address this situation. And, you know, as I said, there, there's many folks that are going to disagree with any decision we make, but there are many folks out there that see it as a positive, that I'm aware, I'm aware of Mr. Newton's business acumen, work ethic, and can be trusted. And we need somebody in this position that we can trust, that is ultimately going to look out for the taxpayers of this county, just as I've done as the elected county commissioner.
And Larry, did you know beforehand?
I never met Mr. Newton until last Monday at the closed session. As Chris said, I was sick in the closed session where y'all set all this up. He did kind of tell me about some of what was going on, spoke about various applicants, and said that Mr. Newton was somebody he personally knew. And then when we had closed session and decided to go ahead and do this last Monday, Ms. Lindsay and Chris and you all said that of all the, all the applicants y'all interviewed.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Pittman, just don't, don't be talking about what went on in, in closed session, okay? Just.
Okay.
But it was a unanimous decision.
Yeah. I think you can make your point without saying what was going on. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, the fact it was unanimous was good enough for me.
Well, my question is, she knew, he knew, why wasn't I afforded that same respect to be told?
And you, you, you voted on Mr. Newton solely based upon his merits.
But it's not about that.
He went through the interview process with you.
Why did they get there first?
He went through that. Well, that's, that's because, just as you said before you, at the beginning, that you would not have voted on him. So you would have had a biased opinion, you would have had a biased opinion and not voted strictly based upon merits. And you reviewed every application.
I did.
We spent time and time reviewing every one of those applications in closed session. And you had opportunity. I actually even volunteered to meet you up here on the weekend to do a second review, and you declined that.
Absolutely. Because we had come to the conclusion, and I can't talk about too much of it, as Daniel just said.
Right.
And I'm not debating that he's qualified of the applicant set applied. He absolutely is. But you could have, at this point, recused yourself. Lynn wasn't here. You could have won two to one, and we wouldn't be having this conversation right now.
Well, also, too.
But I didn't get the same respect that the other commissioners got up here, but yet you came to me and you asked me to turn the temperature down in this room, which I did last meeting. I absolutely did. Two years ago, when we were elected, the plan was to fire Mike Downs, and I didn't go along with it. And you and Barbara Strang lied to the Independent Tribune about a meeting that happened in your garage. That is why you and I don't have a relationship, because I don't trust you. I gave you a second chance, and this is what you did with me. I gave you a united vote to move us forward and come to find out two, two other people knew and I didn't. That is, that is not acceptable. And I'm going to ask, did you ask, or did you instruct our county manager?
This is not going to be an interview.
Did you instruct our county manager to act like you guys didn't know each other?
Absolutely not.
Or did that just organically happen?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
All right. This is not going to be a back and forth. And you may, you may not.
It's a general comment. This is about transparency, and there's a lot of people here. And if you did the right thing, you should want all these news cameras to blast it out to everybody.
And I did.
Because I'm not done. I've got a whole nother half a sheet to go.
Well, you can continue to ask the questions.
This is not just, you're not going to cut me off.
But this is not going to be a back and forth.
And you're not going to cut me off. So, actually, as a matter of fact.
And I'm not going to share his application because I know that's closed session, so I'm not going to post that. The actual requirements for county manager position were updated on January 24th, 2025. Here's a copy of the new ones right here, so people can actually pause that. Here you see for education experience, a master's degree in business administration, public administration are closely related field. On the old one, under education experience, extensive experience in administrative capacity and local government was removed. That requirement was removed. From my understanding, Human Resources wanted to put a residency requirement in there that you absolutely refused to allow. So with a residency requirement removed and the local government experience removed, and now we have your business partner who didn't meet any of those because he does not live in the county, the way that looks is not good.
There is a state statute that specifically says there is no residency requirement for this.
Did Human Resources ask to put that in?
They, they had mentioned that.
And what did you say?
They said, "Do you want a residency requirement?" And I said, "Why would we limit ourselves just to Cabarrus County?"
They pay taxes here.
On our actual job posting from GovernmentJobs.com, "Our county manager should ensure the public's trust, use sound judgment, and requires a practical attitude and readiness to setting example." It says that Cabarrus County employs dedicated professionals committed to preserving the dignity and integrity of the workplace, as well as protecting the rights of each employee. From our strategic plan that we just got through doing, integrity says, "We demonstrate integrity by always upholding the organization's ethical and professional standards. We are dependable and work to establish credibility through honest, transparent actions." And when you guys fired Mike Downs that I disagreed with, here's this termination letter. It cited lack of credibility and accountability, and this was released to the media and FOIA requested. However, what was not disclosed to the LGC said, "Mike didn't disclose something supposedly," but yet his attorneys arguing that, "says failing to disclose this appraisal to the entity responsible for assessing and approving finance for local governments damaged the credibility of the county. Again, lack of transparency. It cast long shadow upon the county's transparency and brought disrepute in local media coverage." And it says, "Either you were directly involved in failing to disclose, or you lack oversight and accountability. In either event, this shows a critical failure to perform your duties as county manager and creates a credibility issue, and your employment is hereby terminated." You signed it. You hired our new county manager, and you didn't disclose any of that. So you fired one county manager and hired another. So I guess it depends on if they're your friend or business partner as to whether you're getting hired or fired around here.
We took a vote each time. I have one vote, as we have five members. There's five votes, we each have one vote. So I didn't hire and fire no one.
All right. Not, I'm not done. I'm not done. All right. Sean Newton, Sean Newton stood right up here last month in open comment and said he was ready and ready for transparency and wanted to earn all of our trust individually. That ship sailed. You didn't disclose it, and he didn't disclose it. He had every opportunity standing there to make sure that the He had every opportunity standing there to make sure that the entire public knew about this because we wouldn't have this conversation.
That would be on me, not on him.
So you fired Mike Downs, but yet you hired this guy doing the same thing.
I did not hire anyone or fire anyone. There is one vote per commissioner and that's the way it goes.
And there's a difference between transparency and damage control and what you're doing right now is because you got caught. This is not transparency. You're trying to justify...
I got caught with anything.
You didn't disclose anything. All of our characters on display.
You can finish your comments.
I will finish. All of our characters on display. And so Lynn, are you still online?
I'm busy, man.
Is Lynn Shu online?
I think he has left. Yeah. Are you still on?
Is it here? Well, because of this character, and I'm telling you, I would not have, I would not have voted the way I did. I cannot take that vote back. So I want to make a motion that we terminate his contract effective immediately so that we can open the process up again nationally and have a third party hire our county manager so that taxpayers can have trust in this process again because I don't even trust it in this.
So do you want the, do you want, would you, do you want the residency requirement? If we're going out and searching nationwide, do you want a residency requirement then included in that? Because you just argued that we should have it.
That would be nice, yes.
All right. This is, this is getting a little loud.
I made a motion. I'm waiting for a second. I don't know if Lynn can hear me or not.
Each commissioner has one vote. Where was my vote? You didn't count mine. You didn't even turn me on. I, I couldn't even listen to the, to the minutes.
Lynn, I made a motion. Do you want a second?
Yes, I do.
All right, we have a motion and a second and I'll ask the attorney, is this an appropriate time to have this?
I mean, at, at, at this juncture, I mean, the, the commissioner has made a motion and there is a second, so I think there's a motion on the floor that can be dealt with.
I want to make sure that my motion is to terminate the current contract with Sean Newton and reopen this process nationally and have a third party do the hiring that takes all of us out of the equation.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to interject something if you don't mind. Kenny, were you ever coerced in any way to vote for Sean?
No, I said no.
No, you were not. Sean is perfectly qualified. He's going to be an excellent county manager. He is financially, uh, he understands what our problems are. $62 million in debt that we are projected to be in the next five years. A billion dollars in needs for schools. All of the things that the last commission had zero problem in voting for. The revaluation, every bit of that money that they made, spent, left us with absolutely nothing and you cared nothing about it then, Mr. Wortman. You cared nothing about it then. Hold on, it's my turn. It's my turn.
That's fine.
Sean is qualified. He went through the application process just like everyone else did. It doesn't matter and to your point, you wouldn't have voted for anyone regardless if it was somebody that we had known in the past, if it was some, if it was Kelly, would you have recused yourself to vote for Kelly because you know her?
If all of us recused ourselves, how would she get voted in?
Exactly. Maybe we should have just put Doug Paris here.
That was the plan two years ago?
No, well, it wasn't the plan this time, but you thought it was. You thought it was. You said we were going to put the town manager from Midland up here and we didn't do that.
It was planned two years ago in his garage that he lied about.
We went through the application process. You chose a man that is highly qualified for this job. I'm so excited for him to be here because you know why? He is going to work on behalf of the taxpayers who have been left out this entire time because it's been nothing but government increase and spending. And I am proud to say that I voted for Sean to stay and I will keep him here as long as he is willing to stay. I think he's going to do an excellent job.
Am I allowed to respond now?
Sure.
Okay, so you guys continue to talk about the previous board. Our tax rate was supposed to be set at 60 cents. I set it at 57.6 and we're currently at a $7 million deficit. So if we had have gone revenue neutral, it'd been a whole lot more. I'm the commissioner sitting up here that lowered it. You voted against it. It would have been 60 cents had you not voted.
No. That you...
That's absolutely true, Chris.
You did walk in here and you did, you know, uh, cut the tax rate, but you did not want to go revenue neutral. And throughout that budget process, you allowed it to balloon to over revenue neutral.
I did.
Let's let Commissioner Pittman.
I want to ask Mr. Wortman a question. Did you know that Mr. Newton was not a resident of this county when you voted to hire him?
Probably. I don't know, probably.
Sure, if, if it helps you out, sure.
Well, I mean, now it's an issue. You know, it wasn't apparently last Monday, so...
It's an issue when I found out that our human resources, and I found that out today, that our human resources wanted to add that and Commissioner Maysma refused to do that because it absolutely looks like a setup at that point. But none of you are addressing the fact of why I didn't. Do you want to be left out? You knew, you didn't say anything to me. You knew, you didn't say anything to me. None of you said anything.
No.
You know why? Cause just like you don't trust us, I don't trust you. I don't trust you, Kenny. And I have absolutely no reason to trust you because you've given me no reason to trust you.
That's a pretty rich argument coming from somebody who used to feed me closed session information from the school board.
That's not true.
Barbara fed me closed session information from the commissioner.
That's a straight up lie. That's a straight up lie.
It is not.
No, yes, sir, it is.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. And I want to be clear, the motion is to terminate the contract. So everybody that's in favor of terminating the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Can you even hear?
No.
No.
He didn't get a chance to vote. Can we unmute him so he can at least have a chance to vote?
Yes. All right, so motion carries four to one. I mean, the motion's defeated four to one. If it's not, if you don't vote, it's a motion, it's a vote in the affirmative.
Did you get, I seconded, I seconded it, the motion and I voted in favor of the motion.
Okay, we did not hear your vote, so that's fine. The motion was defeated three to two. Discussion's over. We appreciate it. All right. Moving on, there are other reports in the packet that you've had an opportunity to look at. At this point, we have a need for closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other board comments unrelated to what we had just said?
Okay. So let me try and calm myself for a minute. And I'm just going to talk about Rain who was here from the Cabarrus County Animal Shelter. She was here earlier. She is up for adoption. I also would like to tell Jonathan Weaver that I appreciate him so much coming to meet me at the animal shelter on Thursday so that we could highlight some more animals that are going to be up for adoption. And, uh, thank you so much for this amazing video that Jonathan Weaver put together for me. And here's, here's our animals for this.
Hey, everybody, this is Laura Lindsay with the Cabarrus County Commissioners. We're here today at the Cabarrus County Animal Shelter. Hopefully today we'll have a little bit of luck of the Irish and get some of these babies adopted. Come on inside with me. Aw, hey, girl. Hi. So we have Scarlett. She is approximately one year old. She has been... Thank you guys for coming out here today. I really hope that you'll consider adopting one of these wonderful animals from the shelter and bringing them home to your house. There's nobody else but you that would be the best parent for them. So please come out to the animal shelter and find your new best friends.
All right. Anything?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things I'd like to address if I may.
Sure.
This issue about starting the meetings with prayer. Prayer is acceptable in meetings like this as American history demonstrates. When they were putting the Constitution together, Ben Franklin, who was not known as a staunch Christian, asked that they open with prayer. It's been a tradition, a heritage of Americans ever since. And so there's no reason we should not or cannot open our meetings with prayer. In fact, if we're real Americans, I think we ought to do that. Now, I'm a Christian. I'm a minister of the gospel, but if we had someone here who was a Muslim or, or an Orthodox Jew and they wanted to offer a prayer according to their tradition in America, that would be fine. Did we allow that? Being a Christian, I prefer a Christian prayer, but it doesn't have to be. But there's nothing wrong with starting with prayer. And, and I'm sorry, I'm going to make some people mad now. But I think for us to start with prayer is a whole lot better than, uh, oh, sorry. I think it's a whole lot better to begin with prayer than to have a moment of silence while the chairman prays to himself. Question about the budget. I can't remember your name, sir, but I appreciate your comments. You're absolutely right. The budget is fixed. We're stuck until June 30th with the budget that was left to us by the previous commission. There's not a thing we can do about it till then. We're going, we're working on setting a new budget. And that will not, uh, come into existence until July 1st. And I believe you're going to see some changes. I certainly intend to make some changes. I for one, fully intend to have the tax rate lowered in the budget process, during the budget process so that starting in July 1st, it's much lower than it is now. I'm being told we can't go revenue neutral. I would push for that. I would, I'd love to see us do revenue neutral. I'm told we can't get there, but we can cut it a lot lower than what it is. Uh, and that needs to be done. And I intend for the budget to be cut a lot by cutting out things that are none of the government's cotton picking business. That previous, uh, commissions have thrown your tax dollars away on doing things that were none of the government's business. I want to cut every bit of that out. Now, it was said before I came up here that, uh, I was going to come in and fire everybody. I didn't come here to fire anybody. If a person is doing their job as it ought to be done in an honest and diligent manner, I don't want to fire them. But if we find that somebody's being a gold brick and not doing their job and not being honest about it, then they need to go. I hope we don't find any of those. But, um, you know, I have my own opinions about the previous manager and felt that he needed to be fired for cause. And so I voted for that because I felt like one of the problems with, uh, Mr. Downs was he's used to doing things Steve Morris's way and Steve Morris ain't here no more. And so the change had to happen and that was part of the change. So we need to, for one thing, concerning Mr. Newton, he hadn't even taken office yet. He didn't come in till March 24th and you already wanting to kick him out. I understand a lot of people would have liked to kick me out before I took office, you know? An office I didn't even want in the first place. But now that I'm, I have it, I'm trying to do the best I can for the taxpayers. And so let's give Mr. Newton a chance. Let's see what he does. You're trying to kick the man out? He hadn't worked a day yet. Hadn't had the chance. If you want fairness, be fair to that man and give him a shot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to pending litigation as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-1-318, uh, 11A3. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're now in closed session. Thank you. Thank you.[185.73]